...board presentations this evening. And first up, if we could have Margot Crowley, please come up and do the recognitions for the high school.
Good evening, everyone. Each year at Stonington High School, students that are enrolled in AP classes take an AP exam. And we had 166 students take AP tests this past year. Of the AP tests, there were 17 different exams given, and some students took multiple tests, so there was 296 tests given. And the College Board, which is the governing body of AP, gives, has criteria for students. And we had many AP scholars, and we are here to recognize them tonight. So I will explain the different levels, and I would ask the students to come forward, and you can just stand right up here to be recognized when I call your name. So, there's, the first level is the AP Scholar. And those, that recognizes students who earn a three or higher on three different AP exams. So would Emmett Breen, Will Canela, Ally Capel, Liam Martley, Audrey Mesa, and Dan Robinson, please come forward. Then there's AP Scholar with Honors, and this is the recognizing the students who earn a three or higher on four or more AP exams. So the following students, please come forward. Abby Gibson, Reese Hammond, Hannah Hong, Sam Light, Bryn Morgan, and Hope Soul. And we have AP Scholars with Distinction, and these are students who earned a three or higher on five or more AP exams. And that's Philip Aubrecht and Kyra Wildshire. And being juniors, I mean, being seniors now, these guys have, will be taking more AP exams, so we'll be talking about them later in the year, again, I'm sure. And then in addition, every year, every junior year, students take the PSAT. And the PSAT National Merit awards commended students. There's 1.5 million students who take the PSAT nationwide, and we had five students who scored in the top 5% of those students nationwide. So if you're already up here, just, you can step forward, you can raise your hand, you can. Will Canela, Lila Roberts, Liam Martley, Hannah Hong, and Abby Gibson. So on behalf of all of us at Stonington High School, we congratulate all of you for your hard work. Keep up the good work. Thank you. Photo up, anyone want to come up and take a photo? You're welcome to, before they sit down. Yeah. I know you want to.
That's an enormous achievement. You're welcome to stay. We'd love to have you. Next on the agenda, the presentation of Peter Anderson could introduce our Eversource project presentation.
I wanted to bring to your attention an opportunity to do some really great work in the school system. Eversource has refined their opportunities for us to get more money back for necessary units that we need to replace. It's a combination of three different units, which is lighting, rooftop units, boilers, and controls. And I've brought in their service reps, EMCOR, to come in and talk about it. I have Kyle Ginn, and I have Matt Mullin, and John Smith here from the lighting control. I'm going to turn it over to them, and let them speak, and show you a little bit of what's going on.
Good evening. My name is Matt Mullin, I'm with EMCOR Services and only Mechanical. We're the service provider for your school systems now. John had come to us, I mean, Peter had come to us and asked us if there's a way that we might figure out a way to help replace some of the aging equipment that's in the school system. And we highlighted this program that Eversource has, where they allow you to do energy improvements, do some that have really good paybacks, and some that don't have really good paybacks, put it together, and then they allow you to actually finance it. And we just heard that for municipalities, they now allow you to finance it at 0% interest for five years, and with a little bit of interest over seven years. So, the key is, you spend some money, you get some money back on incentive, so it's going to cost you overall a lot less than what it costs you to do just the direct replacement, and you get an energy-efficient building out of it. The energy savings then hopefully will pay for the improvements. So, with that, I'd like to just start out and talk a little bit about the three buildings that Peter asked us to look at. What we did is, he asked us to look at the high school, the middle school in this building. For various reasons, the high school has some aging rooftop units that are falling apart and need to be replaced. This building has, I don't know what you want to call the boiler room downstairs, but just make sure you wear your boots when you go downstairs, because there's water everywhere. And then the middle school. So, and what we did is, we just, first step in this process is, we tried to figure out how you're doing in comparison to maybe some other indices. And so we took a quick look at your middle school and your, in this building, and compared to some of the national indices, you're not doing too bad, but those national indices are median, which means there are some doing better, and some that are doing worse. So, our goal is to get you much below those median numbers, and so you do better. And the key column here is to look at some of the building sizes and building activity, and you can see that your buildings down here are a little bit higher for the Potake. We don't have any oil data in here, because we didn't have any in the indices. But basically, you're doing good to okay, okay? For these two buildings. And then if we go to the next one, the high school, as you can see, you're doing a little bit better than normal than some of the other schools around the country in the Northeast. But again, that's the median number, so there's some that are better and some that are worse. So our goal is to get you down. That tells us that there might be some opportunities to save some energy, and then use those energy savings to help augment the on-the-bill financing that would be available through Eversource. So the incentive program that we're talking about, and I won't go into great detail on is, I would call it a comprehensive incentive up there. What they done is, everybody has, a lot of schools and a lot of buildings have gone through and done what we call the low-hanging fruit. They've done the lighting in the schools, it's a real quick payback and things. But they haven't really looked at doing a lot for furthering energy efficiency by doing what we call deep dives into the energy systems in the building. So, the utilities have come up with a program where they will incentivize you to do more than one element by giving you a higher incentive, and they'll do it even if you do three or more elements, or types of improvements in your school system, they'll give you even more money. If you do three improvements, maybe it's lighting, maybe it's the boilers, maybe it's doing control modifications that make things more efficient, and doing other things, they'll give you up to 65 cents, they can pay up to 65% of the improvement, up to a limit, on how much energy you save. We took this information, and this is a great program, so this comprehensive program, because it mixes up lighting, which has a good payback, with things like rooftop units that don't have a good payback, and you blend it together, and now you can get both of them done, instead of having to pay out of pocket and get nothing for the rooftop unit replacement. So we took a quick look at your three buildings. When I say quick, we talked to Peter, and we did this presentation before the Board of Finance last Wednesday night, and we had about four days to put this together. So this is only meant to be a rough indication of the type of things that we look at. We did some back-of-the-napkin calculations, looking at a brief walkthrough through the schools, based on experience, what we might achieve. And what I'd like to focus on here is the bottom of this, I don't know if you can read that, probably can't, right? It's not likely to be tonight. So we look at things like upgrading the lighting on the, at the fields, at the gym, the schools. We look at doing, fixing some things that are broken with the rooftop units. We look at making some control changes, some set point changes. Not a lot of heavy expenses in that, but can be very worthwhile to save energy on. And then we go, that's at the high school. Then we go to the middle school, we looked at upgrading some lighting there, and installing some additional controls, maybe do something to the roof, the units that serve the gymnasium that run all the time, bringing in a lot of fresh air. You may not need to bring in all that fresh air all the time for the gymnasium when it's not there. And the key here is, when you look down here, this is the potential that if you were to spend, and this is just, again, a ballpark, a million dollars, a million-one, you could get a half a million back from the utility incentives. That's pretty significant. In our experience, we've done $15 million in energy projects over the last some odd years, and we've gotten about 30% of it back in incentives before this program came out. So this gives you, shows you the power of these kind of programs. And then you put the on-the-bill financing together with it. And it's a great program, and it's designed to get municipalities to do exactly what we're talking about, replace the old inefficient systems with newer efficient systems, and do it in a cost-effective manner. So, that's all I have to say about the program. This is just to give you an idea of what we're looking at. There's a lot more work that we have to do to confirm some of our, again, gross assumptions we did when we looked at this. But we think, we feel confident that we can achieve somewhere along this way of the savings in the buildings to help pay for things in the schools. Any questions? Wow. Okay, please, thank you.
Is there any kind of an eco-feedback component to this? I was just reading an article about how if you let people know in real time what, how much energy they're consuming, they'll consume less, like 5% to 10%. And I just came from a place, it was a college, that when you walked into the building, they had what they called these energy orbs. And in real time, it would let the occupants of the building know how much power was being consumed in that building in relation to the average. So, if it was a red light, at that moment in time, you were consuming a lot more power. If it was opaque, it was like, kind of neutral, and blue was, you were consuming less. And the students there actually kind of get together and figure out ways to save energy. And it's kind of an interesting way of approaching energy savings. So I just wondered if there's anything like that in Connecticut that you're aware of.
Well, were the dormitories?
Yes.
Yeah. And I've heard that they have compete competitions between dormitories, and they get a pizza party out of it or something, and, but it just gets to thinking about it. And the reason it works there is you have similar buildings, with similar occupancies, and so you can actually have a comparison. We can, don't get me wrong, we can put something, we can put a display in the lobby for the students to look at, to see how they're doing on energy consumption today, normalize it based on whether, a lot of things we can do to do that, if you want to drive that kind of behavior, sure. You can have the students do it. You know, we can work with the students, and they can go through and do calculations, and see where they're at, and, you know, that's a very real thing, too. So we'd be happy to work with you on that, so. Anything else? I'm sure Pete will have a lot more to talk about over the time, but appreciate the time for hearing us out. We hope the program, you'll consider it, we think it's going to be a worthwhile program for you to consider, and hope you do, too. Okay?
Thank you for your time tonight. Next, we'll have Dr. Riley give our second part of the State of the District presentation. And you can find the first part of the district presentation on our website.
I would like to thank Pete and our presenters tonight. This is a very exciting proposal. We know that these systems are going to go out. There, some of the boilers, et cetera, are 40 years old. And we can either do them now, or we can wait until a snow blizzard in February and pay twice. So I know that the Board of Finance was very excited about this prospect, and we will be bringing back more information to the board in December. We're looking at the agreement we need with EMCOR and with Eversource, so you'll be seeing this, hopefully with some documentation that we can approve and then move on in the future with the Board of Finance and EMCOR. I'm pleased to present the second of four series on the State of the School District. You recall, last time, we talked about curriculum and instruction and programs in our schools. Tonight, we'll be talking about staffing and teacher retention. You have in front of you two handouts. One is a narrative document that will be on the website, the other is a copy of the slides that will be presented this evening. We think they're going to be, there they are, okay. These are the different programs that we'll be presenting. Tonight, again, is the staffing and teacher retention. In December, we'll be talking about facilities and infrastructure, and then in January, budget and resource allocation. You note at the bottom, there is a link to this whole report series, you're welcome to take a look at. We keep adding each time after the board meeting to make sure that our community and anyone interested can see this presentation. So with staffing and retention, we do have the philosophy that we want to hire the very best, not only teachers, but all of our staff. And just to give you an indication, we are a people business. We spend $28 million on salary and benefits, which is 76% of our total budget. So that's pretty typical of school districts. If you look around, others are between, usually 75% and 80%. Our personnel is funded through the general budget. We have 16 administrators, 192 teachers, five nurses, some other specialists, six technology specialists, 123 paraprofessionals, 20 secretaries, 23 maintenance custodians, and 132 coaches and other stipend positions. We are absolutely a people industry. As I said, we're always looking to hire and also retain highly qualified staff. We have made efforts in this past couple of years to increase the number of teachers with a degree in the content area that they teach. Even though a teacher may legally be able to teach a particular grade level, if they don't have the background in math, for instance, we have made efforts to move people into those positions that have that content area expertise. The example is math at the middle school level. I believe we moved some teachers around, and we're able to hire three new teachers at Stonington Middle School that have a math content area specialist. We also are looking at teachers that have cross endorsements, that have, they can teach, you know, French and Spanish, or social studies and English. As our schools get smaller, we have declining enrollment, as you know, it's important for us to be able to have some flexibility within our teaching staff. So we've encouraged our teachers to look at those cross endorsements. The climate and culture of our district is very important. It's how we treat our employees. We have a practice of no automatic annual pink slips. This is something that this district was doing prior to 2012, where because of budget uncertainties, et cetera, we would give teachers notice that they may or may not come back the following September. We don't do that anymore. We plan ahead, and we budget for the teachers that are going to be here. We don't want that angst from a teacher not knowing whether or not they have a job. We have an incentive for a notice of retirement. This is something that I implemented, I think, my first year here. We were having teachers that were going to retire let us know in June whether or not they were coming back. So then we'd have to go out and advertise, et cetera, and get teachers in June, and July, and even August. So what we did is, we simply said, if you're going to retire anyway, we're going to pay you a certain amount of, a minimal stipend, to let us know early, let us know in January, in February. And that way, we can be the first ones advertising for teachers. That has made a tremendous difference in the quality of our applicants and our teachers. We're the first ones, the first districts out in this state hiring people, because we know who's going to retire, who's going to leave, who's going to move, because we give a very small stipend for that. Another thing that we implemented is a sick leave donation program, that you're all aware of. We had a situation back, I think it was 2013, where a teacher had a medical condition that she was going to run out of sick leave early in the year, like in September. And she would have lost benefits, and salary, and everything else. So what we implemented was a, basically a way to give a gift to a friend, to a peer. And that, we offered this program where any employee could offer up to five of their sick days to someone who needed it. Whether it's a custodian, or a teacher, administrator, whoever it is, we could all donate to the person that needed them. And so far, we've had 17 employees that would have been out of, it would have been extreme hardship on them. The days that have been offered, donated, look at that, 2,371 days. Of those, 405 needed to be used by those 17 people. But you can see the wonders, the generosity of our staff for each other. Not one of those 17 employees lost a penny in salary, in a day of lost pay, or their benefits. They all were able to get through their illness and come back and be working. And that just, I think, is an indication of how we do care for our staff. The childcare, you'll be hearing a little bit about the DEN, that's our new name for our childcare program that will be starting in February of this couple of months from now. And the idea there was, here's another thing, I mean, sick leave donation, we don't need to do that, that's not in a contract, it's not, well, actually, it will be in our new contract, which is nice. But it's something that I've actually had calls and emails from other districts asking how do we do that, because it's just such a gift for those people that need it. But we're always looking for ways that we can help each other out. And I heard, or we all heard, that the cost of childcare is enormous. And we had a meeting several months ago of interested employees, and I remember that one person has two children, ages, I think, two to five, and she was paying over, I think it was $26, $2700 a month for, just to take care of those two children. So, this is modeled after a program that I was involved with in another state, and we were able to have our own childcare for our own employees, and save about half of the cost for those folks, and have a very, a high-quality program. So if you're a brand-new teacher, and you have, you know, a three-year-old child, and you're ended up paying $60, $70 a day, we'll get into this a little bit later, I have some more information on it, but we're able to just about cut that cost in half, and have the program, the program we located at Stonington High School. So these are just some of the ways that we treat our employees. We want our employees to want to be here, we want to retain them, people want to stay here, because we have things like this, that we do care about our employees. I'd also like to mention that we have professional growth. We provide teacher voice and choice. We went to great lengths, Mr. Smith and his staff, in developing the new Stonington Middle School program. His Encore program is something that I certainly have wanted to do my whole career, where you just, you go to teachers and say, what is it you've always wanted to teach? What is the one thing, you may be an English teacher, but you really wanted to teach, you know, something, something else, a particular class. And those teachers were able to come forward and say, I've always wanted to teach international sports, or Latin, or pottery, or whatever it was. And we were able to let them develop their classes that they've loved. We also have new clubs, a new curriculum. We have 59 teachers were involved with curriculum writing this past couple of years. And that's, it's not a topic, we don't just go out and buy curriculum, our own teachers, our experts, are the ones that we turn to, to not only write curriculum, but to pick the programs that are good for our kids. You may recall when we were, back in 2013, 14, looking at coming up with a consistent English Language Arts program. Our teachers piloted several things and came up with the Wonders program. That was selected by our teachers. It's something that we needed for our children, and we turned to our experts for that. We also have personalized learning plans and committee participation. When you, when you look at the narrative sheet, you'll see a number of examples for all these. I didn't list them all on the slides tonight, but there's some more detail in the backup, you can take a look at that. We also are very proud of our, not only our teachers, but all of our staff. We've received the Education Foundation mini-grants, approximately $15,000 in the last couple of years. The Apple Grants, Blue Monday Music Grant Awards of about $16,000. We have Fulbright awardees, five of the Fund for Teacher awardees, and on and on. There's two pages listing by school, by level, of the awards that our staff members have received. We couldn't be prouder of our, the accomplishments of our teachers and other staff members. So some other things that we do to support our teachers and staff, we have new teacher follow-up visits, really enjoy that. Mary Ann and I went out to the schools last couple of weeks and met with our new teachers, just to see how they're doing, and if there are any specific needs, and making sure that they like their principals, which they do, by the way. We have a wellness challenge going on right now, where our staff put together, let me see where my, I have a little monitor here. It's my, when I take a step, it clicks. And so we're challenging each other. Each school had sign-ups for how many steps each school can take. So we're, the first week of that has gone by, so we're having fun with each other with that wellness challenge. We have assistant principal roundtable. We have assistant principal roundtable, where the assistant principals get together and share their ideas and concerns. A leadership team structure that, instead of just having a meeting every week, we focus one time on data, one time on evaluation, one time on professional learning, and another on operations. So we're focusing in on the needs of the district overall, but how it applies at each school. Then again, we have professional development at all levels, and some of those examples are listed in your, in your narrative. So tonight's presentation is to, really to say, we love and care about our employees. We'll do anything to hire the very best people and anything to retain them. We're very proud of our staff. We need them to help us move forward, including them in all the curriculum and instructional decisions that we have. So that, that's the program this evening. Next time, it's facilities, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Riley? Thank you very much, and that will be on the website. Next, we have communications and recognitions. I would like to start off, because I would like to recognize Heidi Simmons, our newest board member. If you would like to stand up, please. She has been sworn in. But the new charter does not allow her to sit at the table until after the 19th of November, the second Tuesday after the election. So you will see her at the table next, next month. And she is going to the Cabe Conference tomorrow with Candace and Dr. Riley and myself, so we'll get to spend more time there. And I have chatted with Heidi over the last couple of months or so, helping to answer some questions, give her a small orientation. She will be at District Office on Monday morning, meeting with the Cabinet and getting a little tour, and being able to talk one-on-one with our administration here at Central Office. Thank you very much, Heidi, and we're excited to have you here for the next four years. At least at this time, right? And I'll just continue on here, I have a few things. High School Play started tonight. One reason why we decided to rush and move into our new space is because they have opening night tonight at the high school, and it will also be there at 7 o'clock Friday and Saturday night as well. There are no matinees for this show. And La Grua Center and the Remembering Pocket Tuck Memories fabulous video, if you haven't seen it. The presentation and display is open at the La Grua Center through December 15th, so I hope everybody's able to make it over there. Lots of people contributed to this, and they did just an amazing job. And we should all take a little bit of time to watch the video and also the book that's I feel like I'm missing something, but that's it. Anyone else have some recommendations or communications?
I was fortunate enough to attend the CAS Principal of the Year Dinner a couple of weeks ago for Alicia Daa, and it was so incredible to me, because, you know, it was every, everyone here plus people that showed up for Alicia. And I think it just dovetails really nicely with what Dr. Riley just presented in terms of, you know, finding the best people and keeping the best people. And I think that in your tenure, you have done an incredible job of finding administrators that will take such great care of our kids. And it's a trickle-down in terms of, you know, teachers finding, I mean, principals finding teachers, and the way that it all ties together. And we are so fortunate to have made so much progress in such a short, relatively short period of time over the last couple of years. I mean, Dr. Riley brought it up last month with the first state of the district address, and I just started remarking on our progress. And I think it's taken a little bit of time to sink in, but it is, I guess, for, I just am thinking that four years ago, I never would have imagined, when I came onto the board, I would not have imagined that this, that the goals that have been met, or the progress that's been made, would be obtainable within a four-year period. And this is only the beginning of that growth. So I just, you know, I feel really fortunate to be part of this community. I feel really proud of this district and what it is just moving forward with on a daily basis. And that dinner kind of brought it all together, and I didn't want to lose the opportunity to say something.
I'm sorry, any other recognitions or communications? I do have one more. As we sit in this space, I want to thank Peter and his staff for the work they did to get this together in this amount of time, and also Anna for getting all the details set up with everything else you're doing and that's going on. I just want to say, thank you. We appreciate that. Do we have any comments from citizens? Ms. Lightner, you can find the podium.
I'm not good. The older I am, the more I can, talking to people, it's just so annoying. So I really plan that I wish my, you know, all the great things that are happening at Stonington Public Schools, all the scholars, to see the board, the connections, here Dr. Riley, for two, one happening, and, you know, we really have such wonderful things going on in this district. And I'm, I'm always looking to see about good things in, in the paper and in the media. And before I start, I wanted to first thank all of these members personally for serving the time, the commitment, to this town, for all of your work and support. And to highlight who's on board, but also, you know, in the official. Anyway, why am I here? Now, I woke up, the paper arrived on Sunday to find that Stonington was front page, and headline is, that the board had invited on the Chauvin program. So things that everybody pretty much knows about it. I just wanted to take people to get free sense about, about this investigation, characters in the article. Number one, page six, there's thirty girls captured all day, they were repeatedly touched by Mr. Chauvin's son, touching others, being captured, we found them before. To me, this is extremely disturbing. And I know it's probably known, but to talk to people about it. Number two is, there was an independent investigation being pushed by Mrs. Corrigan, Simmons, and Mr. Morehouse, and they were given sub- and independent investigation in a sub- and way of review. So it's being undertaken by the State Office of Child and Child Safety. Watch, we're not reading the names, however, it's not the children's. So I understand that the review is ongoing, and that the case has just started in August, so hopefully it gets, sooner or later. And that's, that's, Harvard gives that school board, and they're calling for the investigation, and how President of the School, Van Roney, and others, both, and for it. The former high school teacher, which Chauvin's been for a research, who was a female student, over a seven-year period. And that's pretty much, and that was the lead in here. I'm here, and I'm former member. I'm here as a thirty-six-year resident of Stonington Public Schools, and I'm here as a mom of a student, with the administration. I feel for all of these girls, you know, with the rest of their lives, whether they got to talk, whether they're not in college, but the issue still, and, I know the report, you know, see, I know the report. But I feel that we owe it to these thirty-plus girls, who are, who filed for, hopeful, in the administration, that this was not okay. And I would hope that if they were in the little talks, and would consider an individual investigation. And this is not a call of judgment, or if not, you know, something really bad happened, but at least we can say, we, now women, that we did everything we did, we could do to
Thank you, Ms. Lightner. Are there any other comments from citizens? Okay, next on the agenda, we have the consent agenda. Do we?
Motion to approve the consent agenda items A through D.
Second.
Are there any discussions? If not, do we have a motion for approval? Or do we have, I'm sorry, a vote?
Aye.
All in favor for the consent agenda? Any nays? Consent agenda is approved. We do have a second read on the curriculum, physical science. Were there any questions on this? If not, could we have a motion for approval?
I move, we accept the physical science curriculum as submitted.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? We have a new curriculum on physical science. Next, we have the approval of the Board of Education 2020 meeting calendars. Do we have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve the Board of Ed 2020 meeting calendars, A through E.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the calendars? If not, is there, do we have a, any yays? Any nos or abstentions? Okay, 2020 meeting calendar is approved. Next, we have the report of the Superintendent of Schools.
I had two items that were already mentioned. The La Grua event of Pocket Tuck remembers was really fun and exciting, and a number of students were there. And I also was going to mention the play, so next time, I'll go before you. No. The next item is the CIP preview. In the past, we have not done a preview. In November, we brought the SIP to the board in December for approval. And I thought it would be helpful for the board to see the items that are going to be brought back to you with, with a lot of detail. On your table tonight, at the back of that packet that was lying in front of you, there's a single sheet, spreadsheet, that lists the items. We listed them into three different areas. The first one is what we'd say is our regular CIP, and if you have any question, let me highlight a couple of these. The gym upgrade, this is for the high school. The gym floor needs to be redone. It needs to be painted, the mats on the walls need to be changed, and the curtain, it needs the new curtain. So basically, we need to redo the gym. It's been there in the same condition since it was renovated a number of years ago, and it really is in need of assistance. The cable and roof ladders, these are on the, on the roof at the high school. Without these ladders, maintenance people, contractors can't get to the HVAC units to fix them and repair them and inspect them. This was approved last year by the Board of Finance at the $160,000 level, but when the need for the Stonington Middle School roof came up, they transferred that, those funds to cover that expense. So we have that on again. The rest of the, the tennis courts, let me look at that. The high school tennis courts are, they were in need a few years ago, and they're really in sad condition. They were resurfaced, I think, five years ago, just to surface. They need to be torn up and redone. There are cracks and water issues underneath the, underneath the slabs. The Town Recreation Department is interested in going halves on this. Whether we do that with $300,000 each, or it's $600,000 to us, or $600,000 to them, they need to be done. My understanding is, just to repair them is about $30,000, and that would have to happen each year until we spend the $600. So this is something that the Board of Finance knows about, and that the Recreation Department will also be advocating for. Then you see, the second section is proposed for the bond. This is something that we brought forward a few months ago. There has not been a bond yet for this, but we're hopeful that either there'll be a bond or the Board of Finance will spend out of their other funds, out of their additional unallocated balance, or some other way. These are very important things for our, for our schools. And the last one is the, what you heard from Peter and the EMCOR group tonight, and that's the, the project to replace lighting with LEDs, a lot of the boilers and RT units, at a, at a cost of, well, we thought it was going to be a savings of 45%. Now it looks like it could be up to 65%. So what we'll bring in December is each of these items with the details. So if it's a kitchen appliance at the middle school, you'll get the, here's what it is and a picture of it, and why we need it. So there'll be a lot of detail, you've seen that in the past, for each of these. So, but if you had any questions, I wanted to bring that up tonight. If you, you can send me an email if you want some more information on any of these, or ask questions tonight. We just wanted you to be aware of what's going to be coming forward in December. We just wanted you to be aware of what's going to be coming forward in December.
You bought two skids gear, right? Or the last SIP, didn't you purchase two skids gear, two bobcats?
Didn't get them.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay.
Yeah. We put in for them, but we bought them, bought one out of our, one out of our ending balance.
I just wondered with the multi-seasonal tractor, if that was...
That's, that's a big, big part of the truck.
Oh, okay.
So both, both the new schools have much more field to maintain and take care of. There's also a tremendous amount of sidewalks that need to be addressed. The two Kubota tractors are four-wheel drive, basically large garden tractors. They can handle a larger plow and a larger mowing deck, which will significantly increase the production of the custodial staff on duty during the day, maintaining the lawn and, and clearing out snow.
Let me also, uh, in our facilities committee before this meeting, we talked about the need of the town recreation and the district to get together and look at maintenance, because the schools are, are very different now. Um, like Peter said, there's more sidewalks, there are more curving, there's more planting. Uh, we don't have as many buildings, but we have some more complicated buildings. And I know that, uh, Leanne from Human Services had tried to set up a meeting with the three groups, and that didn't work out with elections and everything else going on, but we do hope to, to meet and, and work together. I mean, we're, we're all trying to do the, have great fields and, you know, landscaping, et cetera, for our town and for our kids. And there's a lot of redundancy or overlap, that kind of thing. So we will be, uh, working with the rec and the town on, hoping, on that whole MOU that we've had for a number of years.
So in December, we'll have some detail behind, um, all of this list of items. And it also, like, things like the multi-seasonal tractor, um, could we have some specifics as to what that would be used for, uh, and how that, so we can understand how that would differ from another piece of equipment that we might already have? Thank you. Does anyone have any other questions tonight on what's, on the SIP that's listed there?
I just, I just had, uh, is this the full SIP list, or just the new additions, are we?
These are the new additions. There are some, like, computer leases and things that will be, that we already are obligated to.
Next, the childcare, the den, and I want to thank Dr. Riley for keeping on this one. He mentioned this last spring. I didn't think there'd be any way in the world we would get this far. So thank you for your tenacity.
Well, the best part of this is the cover, the little bear coming out of the den. Uh, I'd, I'd like to thank Mary Ann and Kristen Oliverio, who have put a lot of time into this. We've met twice now with interested employees that have children, uh, really between ages of two and five, that will be able to save significant amount of money, and also have an incredibly high-quality program. If you'll, I'm not going to go through everything in this folder, it's for you to take home and take a look at, but the green sheet is, is a program description, and, um, I'll just kind of highlight some of the things in here. Obviously, the purpose is to have a great program at a reduced cost for our employees. The district is not making anything on this, that was never the intent, um, but the district is also, we won't not be paying anything out of the general fund. This will be covered by the tuition that we charge, um, so there's no obligation, no financial obligation from, from the board. The timeline, we want to start, uh, in February, the first, Monday in February, February third. We have a deadline for signing up by December sixteenth. Participation requirements, we are asking that the children be two and a half by September thirtieth. One of the, uh, employees that came earlier this week, on Tuesday, we had the information meeting. I think they, her child missed this by, like, a week, and we said, I think we could help with that. The idea here is for our own employees to be, uh, to have access to this. To sign up, if there are not enough vacancies for all applications, we'll have a waiting list, and we'll have the older children have priority over the younger ones. On the back, the ongoing general requirements, parents must commit and sign up for all the days, and we have to staff for every day. I had one employee who's, who works every other day, or three days a week, um, ask if they could just pay for the three days, but we have to staff for the whole time. So if they, we're not going to have partial days, or, you know, you, it's not a morning, afternoon, you're going to pay for, uh, all hundred and, or all, I'm sorry, all eighty-nine days, plus a couple of days at the end. That's the only way we could have consistent staffing and make sure that everybody's paying the same thing. The hours, we'll have this from seven to four-thirty. It'll be located at the high school in the former preschool room. There are two days, May eleventh and June eighth, that the elementary schools have extended staff meetings until five-thirty, I believe, so we're going to keep it open until six. And that's the nice thing, we're not, if the regular, the others, preschools and childcare programs around, make parents pay for days that they're, they don't use, like, like winter break and summer, and, so we don't have to do any of that. We only are charging the days that it's open, which are the days that our employees are working, our teachers are working. The costs are thirty-eight dollars a day. The going rate out there, the, the least expensive we found is fifty-seven dollars a day, and it goes up to seventy-plus dollars a day. So we're, we think, we had, actually had a cheer go out from our, our, our parents who hoped to, to use this in February. We also are asking parents to help us. What, you can see in here, there's an elaborate, uh, number of, there's a bunch of documents about the curriculum and the daily schedule, et cetera. We're going to meet with our, our parents and get their feedback on both the, uh, the schedule and on the setup of the class. And, uh, so those are, those are the main parts of this. We're very excited, and we hope to have, uh, solid numbers by the middle of December. And we will be hiring, by the way, the, the staffing, we'll have a coordinator stipend kind of position. We'll have a lead person who will be there about approximately six hours a day, and then we'll have assistants. So there will be three adults in the program at any time, at least three, and, uh, for a maximum of twenty, twenty children. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we know how many are interested at this time?
We took, we took a survey, and we had twelve to fifteen, like, for sure, and we had another number that were interested based on the curriculum, because we, at the original meeting, we didn't have that. So I think we're going to be, we really need seventeen or eighteen financially to make this work. Um, I think we'll be there with our own employees. If we are short, say we had fifteen, and we needed a couple more, we would look at, you know, relatives, you know, grandkids of employees, or even, um, I've had some requests from other town departments, you know, if there's an opening, maybe we can add another person, because financially, we, you know, we, if we only had fifteen, we would have to charge people more, and we don't want to do that. So we may, I think we're going to be fine, though, from the, from the interest.
Um, obviously, getting it off the ground is a big undertaking, but would you foresee this going down in age as the program gets more involved?
No. I think, um, twenty is the maximum we can have in that room. Um, if you get, if you get into the infant, the staffing ratios change, too.
Right.
Right now, it's, we're not, we don't have to be licensed by the state, but we're going to meet all the guidelines, or exceed the guidelines. And that would be ten to one for this, these age. If you get down to infants, it's four to one. So the cost goes way up. So we're looking at, uh, two, the two and a half to five.
Okay. Um, also, do you foresee a way for students to be able to volunteer time in the program, or do kind of a work stuff, like a senior project, or use it for, like, the psych class when they're looking at child development? Any of those kinds of interactions?
Any, any and all of those.
Okay.
Talking to, uh, Mark and Margot, we met the other day, we need, uh, CTE kinds of classes, or, you know, tech classes, um, at, at the high school. We can't do it in February, because, you know, it's, it's too soon, but our hope would be that we could add a child development component, a class, and then this could be like the lab for the child development class. That would be amazing. And then, then you go to a community college and get your ECE certificate, and you have a job. Uh, so that, you know, that's our, it, work training, uh, not only that, but just giving, uh, our high school students experience with, with little kids on, you know, how to work with them and raise them, that kind of thing could be helpful. So we, we, we won't be doing that in February, but it's our hope that we could add that as soon as we can, because it would be a wonderful program for Stonington High School students to be able to take a child development class and have children there to, uh, to work with, yeah.
Why don't we have these classes? Because it's like a district.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, uh, because we're a, a school district, we don't have to do that, correct? But we're going to meet all of the required.
Well, just one more, what, what?
Right.
So my appreciation goes to everyone that was involved in putting this together. It's really a great program, so thank you. Was there any initial cost to the room, or would the room be assisted with all the equipment?
There will be initial costs in setting up the classroom. Um, Kristen is going to meet with, uh, potential, you know, parents of, of the, of the children, and she already has, like, three pages of, you know, toys and carpets and play centers and puppets, you know, the things that, um, she thinks we would need to set this up. So there, there will be an initial investment, we're asking for a deposit, and if there is any cost above that, it would come out of the tuition eventually. There will be no additional cost. There may be upfront costs in January that we have to pay ourselves back, but that would happen right away.
Thank you.
It is eight o'clock, so if there are any students here, you have met your obligation, we're happy to sign your papers for you.
You can stay if you want, you know, you don't have to leave. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the policy regarding dogs, pets on fields and property. Uh, Dr. Riley, if you could give us a little bit of background on this, please?
Yes, the issue, um, came up because there were questions, particularly from recreation, about what our policy was, uh, for dogs and pets on fields. So the, uh, town of Stonington, uh, through the Board of Selectmen, the, uh, Stonington Public Schools and the Recreation Division met. Our policy has been no dogs, pets on, on our campus, and you can see the, the policy that everyone came up with, um, is to come up with, is to basically, um, have no dogs except for guide dogs, et cetera, and where leased, leashed dogs are allowed only in the parking areas, et cetera. So this would be a consistent policy for, basically for recreation and for, uh, us, for our, our games and practices. And everyone is in favor of this. Usually, this would go through a, uh, the, uh, Policy Committee first, but this is something that all three, uh, entities, the, the Board of Selectmen, the Recreation, and the Board of Education, are asked to approve this. We'll bring this back to our Policy Committee for proper placement in the, uh, in our policy book, but I am asking for your approval tonight. It has been approved by, uh, the Board of Selectmen, I understand.
Are there any questions on this policy?
I have a comment. Um, unfortunately, or fortunately, ADA has more than just dogs as assistance guide. So, third paragraph down, I recommend, uh, changing the word exception to this, our service guide and/or assistance, assistance animals rather than dogs, because miniature horses are considered, uh, approved by ADA.
So just change the one word, dogs to animals?
Yes, sir.
That's up to the board.
Sure. ADA qualifies miniature horses as assistance animals as well.
Do we have, um, an opinion? Do we have discussion on that?
Question, I just want to, is, is this intended to apply just to dogs or to all animals? I mean, that gives you some context.
The first paragraph, we talked about dogs as well, so if you ever reference the dogs, we change.
Not necessarily, because the only time we reference the service guide is the third paragraph, is the only time we touch on.
Yeah.
Guide and service animals.
Yeah.
And I just don't want to be in conflict with ADA requirements.
Because I'm looking right here, and therapy pets can include dogs, cats, rabbits, birds, guinea pigs, rats, miniature pigs, llamas, alpacas, horses, donkeys, and mini horses.
That's therapy, and ADA is law, is miniature horses and dogs.
Oh, thanks.
Just to qualify under ADA, it's miniature horses and dogs. I have the privilege of doing this regularly.
Just to let you know, the issue has been, at Saturday games, people bring their dogs, and that they run all over the place and jump on people and bite them, et cetera. So I think that, that was where this came from, but I think having animal, having animals in there would, would actually be helpful.
Most of the time.
Any other comments or suggestions that it, uh, that we change the guide or assistance to animals rather than dogs?
So, just one more question. So, for dogs, that playground, the place, you can't dog, like, you can't dog anywhere if, yeah.
You can, you can't, you can't, Sarah.
I still enjoy bringing my, uh, my dog, I take my dog to work, and after work, I feel that it's very special and very respectful.
Yeah, I think it, it does say that while in Spelman Park, leashed dogs are allowed in the parking areas and east and west pavilion areas, and on the nature trails and roadways in Spelman Park.
But not the playground.
But not the playground.
Or any of it, just.
That's just the way it is.
Like, this is, this is.
School grounds.
Do, do you think this needs further discussion, or, um...
I'm, I'm not really a dog person, so, but on the other hand, it might be like, say, when she steps in or not, or you have to just, you know, a clear, you know, this field, not the dirt field, but on the soccer field, someone's who know a really good dog, and they're still playing, they're good dogs, there's no games going on. I understand while there's games going on, and dogs.
I don't, I don't disagree. I don't disagree with you. Do we already have rules that state that there are not, that dogs are not allowed on school property?
Yes.
So...
It was already in existence, right? Dr. Riley?
We have, yeah, then we have signs.
Right.
Not enough signs, probably. We're going to put some more back if this happens.
We're going to put some more back if this happens.
So, if there are already rules that dogs are not allowed on school property, is this redundant and necessary? I guess is my question.
I think the issue is, school property is one thing, but a lot of these fields are considered town fields. So, is it inconsistent to have, you know, this is a school field, this is a town field and have different rules? And again, this came from, we're okay with the way it's going now. We have somebody, if we have a game, for instance, a soccer game, we'll have, you know, Brian Marone or Mark or somebody will be out there, you know, watching what's going on. The rec department didn't have that. And they really had an issue with dogs and particularly just running all over the place, apparently. And they asked to have a consistent policy between the school and the town.
You know, as a parent, you, my, sorry, my kids participated in the Stonington Soccer Club right through, I think it starts, maybe like fourth grade right through eight. And, you know, it's, a lot of people bring their dogs to watch those games and their fields are not associated with, it's the field off of Exit 90. But, they get used to that. And then, their kids move on to the high school. And I get it. I don't think, you don't want animals running all over the place and, you know, people not being respectful. But, it seems like there's like no place anymore you can bring your dog without really not being, you know, it's not permitted. So, I just wish there was an area maybe that people could use. But, I understand all sides of the issue. I just.
That issue was discussed apparently. I'd missed that meeting. Peter was there. And there was a lot of discussion about if we do this, we need to have dog park or dog areas where people can go, let their dogs run, but not be on a soccer field.
Yeah, and I 100% agree with that. I just.
I think everybody nodded and said, "Yes." This may actually push that, you know, it may happen because everybody at this meeting said it was important to do. So, I don't know.
Maybe we can just not do it. Maybe we can, like, just not, but, you know, just not just, not just have dogs.
Right.
A legislation that the, or, 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 actually sandwich in between the fields.
Yeah.
So, if, that's, we, we.
May I suggest that you do pass this, but also give me direction to go back to these groups and say it was very important for the Board of Ed that people in town have an area where their dogs can run that's fenced and, you know, that if we don't do that in the next whatever time, that we may rescind this. That, it sounds like everybody would like to see that happen.
That sounds like a great idea. That I can, I'm much more comfortable with. So, with the change of the wording to animals, not just dogs, I guess we do need a motion to approve.
A motion to approve the policy as amended.
Is there any more discussion on the policy? And in that motion, we'd say with the stipulation that we send Dr. Riley forward to express that we do want further research and continue to pursue an area for dogs to be off-leash with, or animals to be off-leash with their owners. And with that, we withhold the right to rescind this policy if that does not go, if that's All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Thank you very much. Next, are the monthly reports. Are there any questions? Committee reports, the only one listed on here is Communications Committee. Do you have any comments, Craig?
That looks good. We accepted the minutes for time.
Deb is not on the board. She was our liaison to the Building Committee. I've been at most of these meetings and they are, continue to work on the punch lists. And the Board of Finance did approve funding for the testing that will be ongoing over the next, is it four tests, three testing cycles for the PCBs? And then, after that, we can go to the state to see if our tests come back strong, then we can see if we can stop the testing from there. Are there any comments from citizens relative to board action on this agenda? At this point, we have items for future agendas. We have SIP for approval next month, State of the District 3, School Start Times Report, and the SCA contract approval.
Last month around, or before the election, someone contacted me who was trying to access the Board of Ed members on the Stonington website. And they, they found it. But, and I do think it's really easy to navigate, but that person did not. And so, when he was giving me the feedback, he also said, you know, it would be so nice if we, if there was some kind of app for the Stonington schools that could be, you know, people could have on their phone, because it's, not everyone has access to their laptop to go look up a website, which is, you know, I mean, it's different to pull up a website on your phone. And so, I would just like the Communications Committee to think about that in a future agenda.
We could put that on the Communications Committee agenda.
And the other comment he had is that he's a, you know, a former parent of Stonington kids and a very involved community member and can't get to all of the school things that he used to, but really misses some of the, you know, I was telling him about highlights that we've seen in the last few months during the presentations before, at the start of board meetings of new programs, initiatives. And he was like, "Is there any way that you could stream this?" So that, and I know this is all going into Communications, but the idea was, I don't think we can have a TV channel like Rotten does. But, he, that was what he wanted, because he would love to be able to see the plays down the road that he couldn't get to. Or see, you know, these, that, especially those presentations at the start of board meetings that are really spectacular. And we're, we're like the audience, you know, but if the town had more access to those things?
Well, we do have a TV station recording this evening. And they do post that and it is accessible, maybe if we publicize that a little bit more. And are also working with them to possibly get other items that they could stream for us. They don't have the staffing for it, but we've talked about maybe them being able to stream something that we have recorded.
Right. And so, again, I know this all falls under Communications, but just to throw it all out there, not everything can be streamed. I understand that. We could involve students though. And I don't know what kind of privacy issues there are in terms of filming students. But, you know, there are relatives out there that would love to see games, that would love to see, you know, as many things as we can put online or make accessible. And I think that when we're talking about looking at a zero budget that's been put to us by the Board of Finance already for next year, it's really important that we get community members knowing how strong the programs are in our schools and feel, have a way for everyone to stay engaged.
I fully agree. And that's why we've started conversations with the television station. But, yes, we'll throw that back to put on the Communications Agenda specifically. Are there, any other board comments or concerns? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.